Let's recite to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's get back here. So in the event of an emergency, if we need to evacuate the room, please exit through the doors located on the north side of the gym. That's the north side, right? Go out that way. This door is back here. Or follow us. Turn left, proceed directly to the outside or use the door. That's the northwest corner and proceed directly outside the district office. Okay. Okay, I'm gonna turn the meeting over. We're gonna change things up a little bit because we have some special stuff going on. I'm gonna turn the meeting over to our superintendent of schools.
Hi everybody.
Hi.
We're going to even do this a little bit out of order. Tonight's a special night because we get to celebrate our teams who did amazing things this year. Baldwin has lots and lots and lots of reasons to be proud. Tonight, we'll just display two of the reasons to be proud. We're going to celebrate our girls' field hockey team. And our girls' basketball team. And to do that, I'm going to ask Mr. Ramirez to come up. We have Senator Brooks, who was kind enough to come tonight. He would like to present certificates and proclamation. I'm gonna ask Mr. Ramirez to just introduce the process and then we'll go back.
Good evening. I have some words that I want to talk about both teams, but I know that Mr. Brooks has his schedule tight and wants to present tonight, so I'm gonna invite him up to the podium so he can speak about the girls' basketball team and present them with the proclamation.
Okay, good evening. Thank you. I know the girls' basketball team, we were able to get proclamations to them. I was up in Albany during the time we were trying to get the budget done. That's quite a ride up there when we're trying to do the budget. We were up there for 13 straight days. Went home, we got called back, and then finally got their budget resolved. Happy to say on Long Island, we got another 129, additional 129 million dollars for education, so that's great. So the girls' basketball team, you should have the proclamations already. I just want to congratulate you in person. And we do have proclamations for all the girls on the field hockey team, so I'm gonna give that to you. I apologize, we've got a really, really tight schedule tonight, so we're running from place to place. So the coach is gonna give the girls the proclamations after with individual. We're just gonna ask them to come up and we take a quick picture of all of you. Congratulations to everyone. You certainly had a great year in sports here. And congratulations, and you can see that the folks here, the kids, are very much into what's happening in the school, which is great. To the board, I apologize for the quickness of this program. Having spent seven years on the board in Seaford, I understand what you're going through. And the last you need is some politician vowing up the order of things, so I apologize to you for that. So we'll do this real quick and then we'll get on to the next stop. Congratulations and thank you all very much.
We can get both the girls' basketball team and the varsity field hockey team up here for a picture.
You guys wanna go line up on that wall? Yeah, it's this way. It's this way. Right, folks, thank you.
So... In a more proper introduction, I mentioned that it is a proud night for Baldwin, and it is a proud night for Baldwin. You know, we have so much to be proud of. And it is not only our athletic teams, and the girls' basketball teams, they have hurt this broken record now like 16 or 17 times. But what is really most amazing about our kids is that not only are they amazing athletes, but they're scholar athletes. And they are good, kind, caring people. You can't get a more well-rounded group of kids than the kids that you find in Baldwin. So I have to say that again because it is true and it's worth sharing. I also want to say one last thing before I turn it over to you, Mr. Ramirez. When you, when we break and you see the cake that's back there, one of our high school students, Ari Peralta, he baked that cake.
Ari.
And he came in his chef's outfit. This was his project, he did a phenomenal job. And so he deserves the recognition. So before you dig in, you have to get a look first. So Mrs. Hobbs will be guarding that cake and will not let you in until everybody gets a chance to look at it. And when you guys, you girls see Ari tomorrow, he deserves a huge thank you, alright? Alright, Mr. Ramirez?
So before we announce the players from each team and bring them up for introductions, I just want, real quick, a couple of words. Congratulations, obviously, to both teams. We're all extremely proud of the amazing year and the memorable runs they had. Each set a bar of excellence for their teams to come at a new level. Both teams have a lot of similarities in the way that they've gone about their business and succeeded. Tremendous coaching staffs, both field hockey and basketball. They work tirelessly, year-round, to improve the programs, to give our athletes a better opportunity at the next level. The athletes are committed, 100% believe, and buy into what the coaches and the programs are trying to do. Could not be done without the support of the Board of Education, community, and the parents. The parents that we have here are tremendous in not only supporting the coaches, but the individual athletes, not only their sons and daughters. And that really is a piece of the puzzle that people don't see. Without the support of parents, it doesn't happen. We all see the celebrations after the wins, the trophies, the articles in Newsday. What we few get to see is the time spent working on their craft in the gym and on the field. The hours of sacrifice, true sacrifice, that it takes to win. And the level of achievement that these athletes get to. And that's not done without, I say it all the time, dedication, believing in themselves, believing in their teams. We challenge these athletes at the start of every year to leave an imprint, to leave a legacy when they leave Baldwin, to add to what's been here, to make themselves and the time they spent here worthy and memorable in a positive way. Obviously, they've done that in a tremendous way. We haven't had a, can Nashville County championship field hockey in over 20 years, and our first state championship team. So that in itself is a legacy to be remembered. To the athletes, and they know this, you know, I take pride in knowing our athletes. You will be missed, seniors, you will be missed tremendously. But know that your names will be used as an example of what we want our future athletes to achieve, not only on the field, but in the classroom. The amount of colleges that have reached out to us for both these teams, and I was just joking with, where's Coach Hoover? Coach Hoover, raise your hand. We were just talking about, it's something that I take a lot of pride in. We get letters daily from colleges asking about our athletes, wanting to come talk to the coaches. That's what the balance between athletics and academics does. It opens opportunities, it opens doors. And that's what they should be most proud of. We have a number of athletes that are going on to big institutions, big colleges, and it would not happen with the work, with the support, and obviously with the attitude that they have gone through their four years here in terms of achieving academically and athletically. So congratulations, you're gonna be missed, but you will be the example that we use for future athletes. For the athletes that are coming back, the bar is just a little higher now. So it's your job to raise it a little higher next year. Alright, so without further ado, I'm gonna introduce both teams. First with the coaching staffs. For the girls' basketball, I'd like to start with the assistants. Our first-year assistant, Amber Harrison. We also have Mr. Butler who's here. Stand up, Mr. Butler, you can videotape from up here. Mr. Butler videotapes every second of every moment that happens. Mr. Baldwin, who could not be here tonight, but obviously an important part of our coaching staff. Did I forget anybody? Oh, Supios, yes, Mr. Supios, obviously, and Mr. Tom Cattapano, come up, Coach. And now for our players. Junior Jenna Anna Carrico. Alexis Saffanti. When I call your name, come up and then we'll take a picture. Mariah Benavides. Kayla Brown. Ebony Dubert. Nadia Elcock. Roxana Gale. Megan George. Kaia Harrison. Sarah Henry. Asia Hudson. Danetta Johnson. Nicolat Manzella. Montia Moon. Fresh off of a four-hit softball game, congratulations, Montia. Jamila Moore. Sarah Pulis. Elena Randolph. Jada Watts. And Kezi Wingate. Who are 2017 New York State champs. And then if we can just condense for a picture. One more, one more. And now for our field hockey team, I just want to talk a little bit. And I'm not trying to downplay the basketball team, but they, you know, they've had plenty of people speak about them and their accomplishment. I want to just spend a little time on the field hockey team. Because a lot of people don't know the journey of the field hockey team. So I'm not gonna put a number on it, but years ago, had a gentleman come up to me and say, "I think I can coach this team for you." We were looking for a coach. And at the time, I don't think there were any male field hockey coaches in the county. And Mr. Hoover, come up, Mr. Hoover, because I'm just gonna take 30 seconds to talk about your journey. Mr. Hoover, who came from a lacrosse football background, probably never thought that he'd be standing up here celebrating a field hockey championship.
I'm gonna use my... So the one thing that I'll say about Mr. Hoover is over the years, obviously the time commitment, but he treated his athletes all the same, whether they were lacrosse players, football players, or field hockey players. The expectation never lowered, wavered, it was all the same. Compete at the highest level, behave at the best, and just expect nothing but excellence. This year is obviously a great year, but it came through several, several years of planning, working, and getting to this point. Developing a youth program, which he took time and involves some parenting, which we now have in the off-season. Working in the off-season with the athletes to improve themselves individually, but as a program. And little by little, we got there. It used to be that the goal was to get to the playoffs, then it was to compete with Massachusetts. When the last couple of years, the expectation is that we should be to Massachusetts, was who we were expected to be. Who people said were the top teams, the law, that involved, and we hope to hold on to that, you know, that number one rank. It doesn't happen without the vision that Mr. Hoover and his staff had. His daughter, Alyssa Hoover, who's the assistant coach, is JV, coach captain of the field. They all buy into Mr. Hoover's vision, the athletes bought into it. They work as hard as any, if not harder than any team that we have, and that is why they succeeded. I know, like I said before, that we see the championships and we think it's easy. The journey getting there is a difficult one. The tears when you lose and you come up a goal short and you lose in overtime, whether in basketball or field hockey. Those are the lessons that get you to this point. They're lessons for the next season, but they're also life lessons, that you gotta get up, you gotta compete, gotta wake up the next day, go to school, no matter how upset you are at a loss. And that's what these athletes do, they get over the difficult situation, and they continue to compete, and they continue to perform and excel. And that doesn't happen without coaches like this, and Coach Cattapano, so congratulations. And now for the varsity Nashville County Field Hockey Championship Team. Carnaldi Alexandra. Deborah Ariston. And I also lost my glasses, so this is gonna be a little challenging. Kaylee, I'm sorry, Kelly Marie Brady. Kaylee Brower. Kayla Brown. Paul Dady. Nadia Elcock. Kira Engelhardt. Jalen Evans. Gabriela Feeney. Victoria Feeney. Rachel Hayes. Alexis Holt. Kelsey Kane. Elizabeth Madison. Olivia Moore. Sophia Nestor. Diana Richards. Emma Spack. Alexa Steyballer. Isabel Susman. I apologize, Dana Elcock. The 2016 Nashville County champion.
Alright, so... Y'all can hear me. We're gonna eat cake soon. But I just wanted to say, so I was at the, I was able to make the county championship game for field hockey. And the outcome wasn't what we wanted, but the one thing that I noticed was, you know, you girls just fought the entire time, which was incredible to watch. I got tired of watching, that field is huge. It's just huge. So this was the second year I came to watch. Next year, I'm hoping to come watch you guys win the Long Island championship. So we'll keep an eye out for that. And then the girls' team, I was not able to make it upstate to watch. I did, I was able to stream it at home. But the games that I was able to catch, the playoff games, and I said this at the high school, just an incredible effort, just really the epitome of team. Everyone seemed to know where everyone was at all times when things were going on. So, you know, again, it was an incredible effort, and I know, you know, these teams work hard all year round to stay in shape to be able to do what they do. So I want to congratulate y'all again. And with that, I'm gonna say we're gonna take a 15-minute break. Go take a look at that beautiful cake and have some. Have your cake. Okay, so we'll take a 15-minute break.
I know.
Okay, at this point, we're going to ask the, our external auditors to give us a presentation on their reports that they're going to be working on.
Yeah, hi. Uh, my name's Chris Reed, I'm one of the six partners of Cullen and Vanousky with the external auditors for the district. Um, we're hired to render an opinion on the financial statements to provide reasonable assurance that there are relatively free material misstatements. Um, I have a handout here I wanna hand out to you guys. Give me one second. Besides having an external audit, you also have internal auditors and claims auditors. And you, as the audit committee, are overseeing those three audits, okay? So what this handout is, is this basically, you know, tells you the roles of each auditor, we'll say. So, you know, you are the audit committee, so you oversee the internal and the external audits. In some places, um, instead of the whole board being the audit committee, there's other places where sometimes it's just a couple of the board members and some residents. And in a rare case, I only know one district, where it's all residents and no board members. Dynamic, but, uh, so, so that's the audit committee, so, you know, I'm just going through the top column there, I mean, the top row. And so the internal auditor, they do more of a procedure-type audit. You know, they're looking at procedures. External, we're specific to the financial statements, the year-end reports. You know, and they kinda intertwine the internal and the external. We are checking, you know, the financial reporting, how the systems work, you know, find our risks. We do risk assessments to find out what areas we wanna focus on. And then the last one, the claims auditor, they just approve the vouchers. They're like very hands-on as far as that goes, it's more detailed to the purchasing process, okay? So what we do is, you know, so we send out this, uh, we see the handout, which Raul is gonna go over. He's, uh, Raul Perez, he's the manager on the engagement as well, because we have a manager, and we also have a senior and a staff. And there's also a backup partner as well, for, you know, some reason that I can't make it or, you know, we need to talk to someone else. So there's always, you know, two partners on each engagement, because we're having enough staff to be able to do something like that. And, um, so basically, you know, so we'll do the audit in two phases, and we'll go into detail with that. And, uh, then when we're done with the second phase, we draft up the reports. There'll be a financial statement, uh, of, you know, a communication to the board, which is a letter. Then we do extra classroom report. And then, um, we'll do management letters, which is not a significant deficiency or a material weakness, which is another report, you don't have that, which is good. Uh, that would be something like, you know, unable to close books, inadequate capital asset records, you know, things like that. So we don't have any of that. And, um, and then the management letter are just comments that we take into consideration with the state audits, to, you know, keep you ahead of the curve. As far as management letters go, yours is like a page, page and a half, you know, so that's great. I mean, you know, I've, we have a couple of clients where, you know, it's like ten plus pages, which, you know, they have issues. But, you know, that's not the case here. So, I don't know, I'll turn it over to Raul, he'll go over the audit specifically. And then, uh, if we're here for any questions.
Good evening, my name is Raul Perez, I'm the, uh, senior audit manager on the engagement. I've been working with, uh, your senior management for pretty much close to ten years. Uh, we had issued a handout to you, looks like this. You go to page three, it identifies the audit team, and more importantly, it actually has our contact information, so if you have any questions or concerns throughout the audit, please don't hesitate to give us a call. Page four identifies the engagement objectives, specifically to express an opinion on your basic financial statements, and to issue a report on internal control over financial reporting. And if applicable, which usually is with Baldwin, if you have over $750,000 with the federal expenditures, you're required to get a single audit. And consistently, Chair Baldwin has qualified for a single audit, so we will probably be issuing the same report. Page five, other information regarding the audit. Uh, the audit is designed to obtain a reasonable rather than absolute assurance that the financial statements are fair material in the statements. An audit is not designed to detect immaterial errors or fraud, but if they do occur, we will bring it to your attention. And an audit includes examining on a test basis evidence supporting the amounts of disclosures and financial statements. Materiality is applied throughout the audit on planning and performing. Uh, this does not include a detailed examination of all transactions. Page six identifies the district's responsibilities, specifically preparing the annual financial statements, establishing and maintaining effective internal control over financial reporting, identifying and ensuring compliance with applicable laws, informing the auditor of any known or suspected fraud within the district, making all financial records available, and providing unrestricted access to district personnel whom we determine to obtain necessary audit evidence. Page seven, our responsibilities as the auditors is to conduct the audit in accordance of generally accepted auditing standards and generally accepted governmental auditing standards, and if applicable, the single audit standards and OMB uniform guidance for any expenditures over $750,000 for federal grants. Uh, we also are responsible for communicating to the board and the audit committee on any matters related to financial statement audits. Our order, we issue audit reports on financial statements and the federal single audit, and we issue our required communications to the board, specifically AUC 260. And if we find any material weaknesses, we would also issue an AUC 265. It dictates specified language to you guys. Page eight, our areas of audit emphasis. We review and test the effectiveness of internal controls. Uh, we review management's corrective action plan and any implementations from prior year findings. We review internal auditor findings, test any significant account balances within the financial statements. Uh, we identify and review any restricted reserves activities. We, uh, we perform substantive testing on any expenditures by functions in my program. Uh, we review and assist in any GACI 34 financial statement conversions, uh, review the capital assets inventories, uh, review any calculations and presentations of loss and liabilities such as your OPEB, compensated absences, and any bonds or installment purchase debts. Page nine, identifies certain four considerations we perform. Uh, we review the financial statements, uh, perform analytical procedures. Uh, we also, based on, uh, our required procedures, we have communications with district management and have, uh, one-on-one talks about any four considerations of fraud, um, uh, four concerns. And we also, uh, kinda delve a little deeper into identifying any pressures, incentives, opportunities, or addictions or rationalizations that occur, that maybe fraud could occur. Page 10 is our projected timetable for this year. We plan on entering the district, uh, the week of May 30th, and during this, uh, this field work, we will actually interview district personnel, review any, uh, specific internal audit reports and claims auditor reports. Uh, we will, uh, review the corrective action plan, test internal controls, review financial, uh, sit down with the key district personnel and review any financial processes and see if anything has changed from one year to the next. We come back again at the week of, uh, July 31st, and that's when we anticipate the books to be closed, and we will perform our substantive testing and review and assist in preparing the financial statements. Any questions?
Just one question, in terms of, oof. In terms of the, um, both generally accepted, um, standards, have there been any changes to those that will change how this audit will be handled?
Uh, there have been some changes in your footnote disclosures, but there hasn't been any, some even changes to your actual, uh, GACI 34 financial statements. So for the most part, it's been, uh, there hasn't been any major conversions we performed this year.
Okay, thank you.
Is anyone else? Yeah, may I go?
Uh, my question is, um, on page eight, you talk about the areas of audit emphasis. Do you, what do you do, use random sampling, is that how you?
Basically, our audit is conducted based on, uh, risk analysis. So we would come into the district and identify any major, um, based on the, uh, prior, um, management comments, we would identify if anything has been cleared. And if it has been cleared, we would identify this more risky area. And we would then also, um, review certain financial processes and see if there has been any major changes and see if any areas of risk were there. And we would kinda steer our audit towards that direction to determine if significant risk there. Also, from year to year, where if there has been no changes, we would kinda lay back on some testing and focus on other testing to give us more insight into how the district is being run.
Is your emphasis based on your professional judgment or is it usually accomplished with some kind of interaction with the board?
Uh, it's usually a combination of many things. It's interaction with the boards, interaction with key management, and it's usually professional judgment as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just wanna add something to that. As you know, every year, we do send you a questionnaire to fill out. You know, that's part of the communication, we provide information to us, that's one of the communications. And if there's any comments on those, then we'd look into that. But, um, you know, it's also auditors' judgment, and, you know, we definitely look at payroll, because that's two-thirds of the budget, you know, in most cases. So that's always given, and obviously cash, you know. So those are like the two main focal areas in every district because of that. And then we also look at dispersment testing. And, you know, sometimes we'll sit down and talk to Carol, and Carol's like, you know, I'd like you to take a look over there at this, you know, and then we'll go and add that to as part of our audit process. So that's part of it too, you know, when we interview, the first go-around, where to, you know, they'll point us in the direction that they want us to look at something specific.
And we would then also review certain financial processes and see if there has been any major changes, and see if any areas of risk were there, and we would kind of steer our audit towards that direction to determine if there's significant risk there. Also, from year to year, where if there has been no changes, we would kind of lay back on some tests, and focus on other testing to give us more insight into how the district is being run.
Is your emphasis based on your professional judgment, or is it usually accomplished with some kind of interaction with the board?
Uh, it's usually a combination of many things. It's interaction with the boards, interaction with key management, and it's usually professional judgment as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just wanted to add something to that. As you know, every year, we do send you a questionnaire to fill out, you know, that's part of the communication, to provide information to us, is one of the communications. And if there's any comments on those, then we'd look into that. But, you know, it's also auditors' judgment, and, you know, we definitely look at payroll, because that's two-thirds of the budget, you know, in most cases. So that's always given, obviously cash, you know, so those are like the two main focal areas in every district because of that. And then we also look at dispersment testing. And, you know, sometimes we'll sit down and talk to Carol, and Carol's like, you know, I'd like you to take a look over there at this, you know, and then we'll go and add that to a part of our audit process. So that's part of it too, is, you know, when we interview, the first go-around, where to, you know, to point us in the direction that they want us to look at something specific, and we're more than happy to do that for, you know, the board and the district. And by the way, you know, starting July thirty-first, that's like almost unheard of, you know, basically, most districts are, you know, want that week of August fifteenth, that's like when they're ready, and sometimes into September, right after Labor Day. But Carol, you know, the business office is real strong here, and, you know, you're, you're ready within the month, which is, you know, because the books are closed June thirtieth, so that's, you know, thumbs up for you guys on that.
Why we call her Saint Carol?
Oh, yeah. That's so correct. Anyway, so any other questions?
Questions? Um, I guess, a couple of questions. I mean, you guys have been working as our external auditor for a number of years.
Correct.
Are there, as a result of that, is there anything that you see based on that level of experience that will direct you in certain directions to look at certain things, or to say, okay, well, we looked at, we focused on that last year, so now this year we're gonna focus on something else that we haven't looked at?
Right, yeah, yeah, we, you know, we always look at different areas, we add new things, and, you know, every month, you know, we're staff of about fifty altogether, and we have monthly partner manager meetings and supervisors, and we all get into a cafeteria meeting every month, talking about new topics, or what's, you know, on the horizon, and what we've seen, you know, in the past order, what we've seen so far this year, starting the preliminary. And, you know, so everybody's on board, you know, and knows what to look for, you know, at one district, they're like, oh, you know, this district, they had this, and, oh, well, we're gonna look at it here too, and this and that, so, okay.
Okay. That was actually, another question was, are, you know, because I know, you know, you guys are one of the two big school audit firms.
Right.
Are there things you're seeing in other districts that cause you to say, oh, you know, we should look at that?
Yeah, we do close those, let's say, ninety's school districts. Fifty, fifty, fifty of them are, like fifty-three, I think, are external audits, okay? So we do that, and we have ten teams, and, you know, and five out of the six partners all do school audits, so, you know, we've got it covered. And then we have also an internal audit department, and so we do about twenty-five of those, and then the rest of them, we actually do the accounting, because, you know, they don't have the council smith in their business office, and they hire us to actually go there monthly. I do that for a couple of the districts, you know, the small ones out east, and so we're actually the accountants, we put the financial statements together, and, you know, hand the package over, and then someone else will be the auditor. So, yeah, so we're, you know, it's, you know, more than two-thirds of our practice is government, and, you know, we're focused on school districts, and towns and villages and whatnot, by district.
Um, I'm, you know, just wondering, when you bring in the team, you guys have been here for a number of years, um, you like to kind of bring in someone new?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Onto the team, just to get a different set of eyes?
Oh, yeah, all the time, yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, when the RFP process comes up, and, you know, they would rather have another partner involved, we've done that too in some situations. I mean, one of my districts, we've been the auditors for like thirty-plus years, you know, just, you know, we just have like, you know, I have a second partner that's involved in this too, so, you know, I always can fall back on that one, and, you know, we can switch it up if that's the case, if that's ever a concern. But, you know, like I said, you gotta go for the RFP process every five years, but there's no reason to switch unless, you know, you feel it's necessary. You know, what we provide is, if they really want a switch, you know, we would just assign a new partner to it. And we do change the staff, you know, because, you know, when I started, I was the manager, senior on the engagement, and my partner, Joe Sanders, was a partner, now she's my backup partner, I'm a senior partner, and he was the senior, now he's moved up to the management position, and then we have another person, another Saint fan, this will be only the second year, yeah. So we always, we always mix it up, and, you know, Saint fan's been with us, you know, a number of years, you know, ten plus, I'm guessing. Yeah, so, you know, most of our staff isn't, like, we don't have much turnover, so, you know, mostly what you get is you get somebody who has a lot of experience in school audits, so we don't just hire people, you know, right out of school and just throw them into the mix or anything like that, so.
Okay. Yeah, and I, I, even before I was on the board, I was watching the work you guys did, and I think given what, you know, the strength of your team and the strength of our business office, we've been very happy with the reports, and the reports have been good.
Oh, yeah, great.
And solid, so we're looking forward to that again this year. And so this is now the beginning, you're just going to start coming in that week of May?
Yeah, yeah, basically, like I said, we either just send out that communication, you know, you want to meet with us, we're here, so we'll meet with you. But the more important is at the end, most that, we definitely need to meet, because that's when we've done the audit. You know, right now, we've just been planning stages, you know, back at the office, you know, putting together audit programs, having those partner manager meetings, so we know what we're gonna do different this year that, you know, based on last year's audits of all our districts. And then, so we come in the two phases, and then I come back to you, you know, usually you see the September, the October meeting, you know, you guys are normally early, because Carol has everything closed early. And that's where it's important to meet with you and talk about how the year-end, you know, the way you wound up, and, you know, if we did find things to comment or talk to you about, you know, that's, that's important, really, at the end. And, like, say, the audit committee wasn't the board, it was like maybe half the board and residents, or just half the board. The audit committee's function is to accept the reports. The board meeting itself, the, the audit committee is the one that accepts the reports, the board just formally acknowledges and receives the report at that public meeting at the end.
Okay. Anyone else, any other question? Okay. Thank you both very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, we're moving on now, we're going to have a presentation of a demographic study that the district had done by representative from Western Suffolk City.